Joe used to live in.
I got, I had an appointment over there.
We're live, alright.
It's like, oh, it's.
Welcome to the study session. Okay. Okay. So we're going to switch up the agenda and we're going to start with the beautification grant award recommendation. Okay, one second here while we switch this out.
You guys tell me. Why you wear a hat?
I apologize, I did not know that, I'm gonna. What's happening up on open, I thought I did. Dude, that's right here, one second, okay. Alright, we're back here in the denosers, slow then drags. Okay, now we're ready to go. So, we're here with the beautification grant committee award recommendations. They have a little bit of information on the background of it, even though you guys know all of this, we can do the ones that approve the programs. I just wanted to touch real quick on it so that if we have people that watch the video later or members of the public tuning in that they understand what this was. So we created the beautification grant program in May of 2022 and it was to seek with partners and homeowners, residents and local businesses in the downtown area to beautify and provide improvements to the community. The last year was our first year, we awarded four grants totaling fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. All of them turned out great. I think the process was really well received. One second here. Oh, let's redo this slightly, we'll.
Are those words written on the boxes, Ashley?
It's part of the vinyl wrap.
Oh, it is part of it?
But that's beautiful.
Yeah, that's.
Not the font on the top of the image.
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
So, these are the projects that were awarded last year, totaling fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. These, just some samples of projects that people could do. So if you're in the future, people are getting into their land three, common space, furnishings, cleaning up areas, pathways, fencing, all those kinds of items can be approved in the grant process. Business applicants can also apply, they do need to be in the Elm City Limits, everyone needs to be in Elm City Limits, preferably in the downtown area. And people, we just need to make sure that they follow all of the code requirements for their projects and that everything meets design standards. The total, the largest grant award that you can give us five thousand dollars for per same grant recipients, and if someone applies again the second year, the maximum they can get is twenty five hundred. So in January of this year, you remember that we brought a couple of minor changes to you from the beautification grant committee and it was just narrowing down the dates and timelines so that we have a consistent yearly schedule and we'll have the same dates year after year. From the time it opens up in February, the first week, do the first Friday in March and then projects have to be completed September thirtieth. So the funds are a reimbursement, so everyone has to spend the money first, providing the proof of the documentation that's required along with the grant and then they can get a reimbursement for that amount. Part of that also does include an inspection to make sure that the project was completed. So for this year, the advertising process started in January, even though the application didn't open until February, we started highlighting good projects from last year on social media, beginning of February, it was announced on the website. An email was sent, it was quality value news as a press release and then we also shared it on social media accounts a couple of times during that two month period. For 2023, the budgeted amount was twenty five thousand, the amount that the committee is recommending funding is nineteen thousand six hundred and forty one dollars for these four projects. First one is a masonry sign. This person is right on Elm Avenue, they're doing a whole lot of improvements to their property and buildings, this will just really add to the business. We have a sprinkler system at the church. There's a path. The pathway resurfacing is at Mountain Sunrise HOA, so their pathway is really in disrepair, they're gonna resurface that and what that is, that leads to the trail system, so that was one of the you know pathways or you know areas leading to community areas is one of the allowed uses, so they're gonna redo that. And then the behind the White Horse Tavern, they have a whole project, it's a pretty large project they're gonna do to clean up and create a nice seating area. And so they're gonna use five thousand dollars to, if it's approved, to remove the concrete that's on the walking area there, there's some concrete that needs to then to help purchase the stamped concrete or paper-like finish to it. And that is the four items that we're, the committee is recommending funding.
Yes.
First of all. The sprinkler system, are we talking about that's a landscape irrigation system?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at the church, so the church has been, they've been really trying, working hard to try to keep their yard looking nice, keep it cleaned up and by putting a sprinkler system in, it will help keep it green and looking nice. You know, they're not there all the time to be able just to go turn sprinklers off and on.
This is for Director Cole, are they near a purple line?
It's the one over by Josh.
On Jefferson?
On Jefferson, that church, down from Jerk Juicy and.
Yeah, I'll talk to the owners and see what.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So if the applicants are not owners of the property, but they're still paying that money upfront, they still qualify, right?
They are supposed to be homeowners, that's part of the application process.
Owners of the property.
Owners of the property, yes.
Could you bring this, could you bring the slide back up with the various projects, thank you.
Is there something, did you have concerns? Because the study's done at the time, I mean, if you have.
Yeah, ask your questions, yeah.
Before the next meeting. I would be happy to take your concerns and comments.
Yeah, well, no, I just the white horse, unless Mr. Phillips purchased the property from the owner, I thought he was the tenant. Well, that, just checking. But to me, I mean, if he's paying that money and he has an agreement to do it with his previous landlord. And I thought it was just a question.
Yeah, no, that's great, I'll look into it. I will have an answer.
And I don't want to mess anything up, that's why I don't want to say anything, but.
I am curious about that same item and it sends five thousand dollars, is that just a portion of?
They have a much larger project they're doing, they're planning on putting new fencing, new gates, because you know, I think they have like paddle panels or something around there, yeah, so they, they have money already raised for the larger project, they're putting new fencing around that'll look nicer, they're gonna do a patio back there and then get new tables with some umbrellas and things, so they're really looking to make that into a much nicer seating area and it will all kind of tie into the activated alleyways.
That would be great.
Help enhance the, what the work of city is gonna do in the future.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo the same thing, it ties in very nicely to the active alleyway concept and what we're doing there.
Any other questions?
What is the, I'll just ask for the masonry sign.
Yeah.
What is?
It's the masonry work for the sign in front of the business, so do person, person purchase the property and she's doing a lot of landscaping. Yes, it's a counseling business and so she's doing a sign out front. And so she can have a new sign put out there where the existing one was and then it's right. Masonry work on each side of the sign.
Know where it is?
Yeah.
It's right, you know the house that was lifted up?
Okay.
It's there.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
That's all. Masonry sign which.
Well, no, no. It's, it's, yes.
Okay, no, as long as, I was just trying to figure out what.
When you get your packets for the next meeting, they'll go out tomorrow afternoon. It'll have the, all the applications in there and it has, you get some photos of each.
It got all the construction.
Oh, no, as I said, I just, I was wondering.
May I ask, is that five thousand also a portion of the cost?
The, the bid that she got for the, to do the work was for the little over the five thousand.
Okay.
And that's all, that'll also be part of the packet.
It's part of the bigger project.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I like that because it's right up front, it's got a really nice curb appeal, so that's.
I thought we had excluded it.
We did not, we talked, it went back toward the end, it did not get excluded.
Anything else?
Yeah. I'm just surprised to see that there's a full amount. But they're not like a portion of, a smaller portion of the project.
A lot of those bigger projects were for I think Kyle's was like, it's over twenty grand.
Yeah, I think it's over twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, we still didn't award the full what, twenty five thousand?
Yeah.
So we stayed under the budget, which we did last year as well. We want to, I mean, this is why council approved this, is to get this money out to beautify these areas and make our town look better, so we're getting that money out. Yeah, I think these are good projects for it.
Here, so even if one of the properties is not really visible, it's still okay to beautify it, but.
You mean like the, like the HOA?
Like the, no, I'm thinking of the church.
Oh.
So brown grass, green, it's nicer.
It's not on the main.
But it's not on the main.
It's on the base rag, it's what she's. Downtown core area.
So it's still qualified.
The final wrap on the bill box was.
Yeah, downtown. It was in my neighborhood.
Are these the only board application this year?
Oh, no, we received two other applications, one of them was not complete and the applicant did not supply the documents, you know, we, I worked with people, if there was additional information, sent multiple emails and never got the additional information that we needed to be able to review it. And then the other one was a duplicate from the HOA, they submitted two different projects and the committee voted to approve the pathway surfacing.
And I'm on committee with them and I know Kathy is, she's come back and forth with, I know at least one that several times to try to get the information, so it's not, it's a lack of.
Our goal is we want to get the money out, I mean, it's approved, it's approved, council approved the program, so I try to email them, I try to work with them to get the information and sometimes we just don't get it.
Bless you.
I'm curious on the update in the team's pharmacy, if, when are they gonna finish their project?
They have their plants, we've had communications with them recently, they have everything ready to go, they're just waiting for the weather to get warm enough to be able to put them in the ground so they don't freeze.
That's why we switched the timing, because we realized that could happen again.
Yeah. It's just a matter of waiting, let the weather get warm enough so that the new plants don't freeze.
The other thing we're gonna be doing next year, and I think for lodging tax, LTAC, lodge tax funding is to create like a little workshop for folks too, if they want to come in and learn about the process more, it's pretty self-explanatory on, you know, the application process, but it can be a little intimidating, so we offer you know, times, community folks come in and they want to learn how to do it or what it's about, what they can use it for, we'll offer that as well.
Any other?
Does anybody have any other questions?
On the beautification.
Any other information that you might want before the next year that I can bring to the next meeting?
Will the next meeting then be conducted similarly where it'll be photos of the projects?
Packages, they'll be included in the package, yes, thank you.
Just going to counsel next to the caffeine.
Yes, the fourteen.
Okay. So, are any, any, anything else? Okay.
Okay.
So we'll go into the ADA transition plan presentation and Al King, I believe. Oh, okay.
No, a few months back, we approved authorized the mayor to enter the contract with Al King do our ADA transition plan and it's well underway, he's got this pretty far along, I'm gonna let him talk to you a little bit tonight, what is an ADA transition plan, why do we need it and what do we have to do?
Thanks, Brad.
It's a been a requirement for. Okay, which. Questions to answer, I'll go through these really quickly and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, it's not terribly complicated, it's, but it's been around for a while. What it, why, what is it, what's required in it and, and the requirements are important to understand because there are elements of ADA that are not in this plan. And where are we in the process? ADA is probably know was passed through back in nineteen ninety, public facilities that are not accessible are discrimination by law. ADA requires public entities with fifty or more employees, that's total employees to form a self-evaluation, a, an inventory if you will, to determine whatever barriers you have. And in this particular case, it is not your entire city facilities, it is the sidewalk ramps and push buttons for the stables only. You can do more and you probably should do more, but this project is focused on the immediate requirements of the, of the sidewalk ramps and the, and the thing of push buttons. We have to address how those barriers get removed, it's pretty simple, you rebuild the sidewalk ramps and you put in push buttons. We have to have a schedule and a budget for upgrades with a priority methodology. The methodology isn't specific in the, in the regulations, but if you don't have it, you're gonna have a serious problem if you get challenged on it. Obviously, you're gonna want to have public engagement, it is required. We typically do about two rounds of public engagement, we're poised at this point to do the first round to put out a PSA and, and move ahead and then we have to make a record of the opportunity for public engagement. Again, fairly simple, but you gotta make that record and you have to maintain it in your files for a minimum of five years. What's required for a plan, these are elements that precede the plan itself and fortunately you've got them pretty much done and you've had them done for some time. The coordinator is, is your city manager. Have responsibility for the entire city and ideally an ADA coordinator is independent, that's nearly impossible to do in a city because everybody works for the city. But the city manager probably is the best you can do, given the size of, you know. You have to provide notice, I think you probably need to advance the notice that you're providing in your various documents and mailings and what have you. Again, it's pretty simple, unfortunately it costs money, you gotta print the things out, you stub them in the envelopes and, and put out the PSAs and all that kind of stuff. It's not complicated, it's just a pain. You have to have a grievance procedure and an appeal process statewide, again, it's not just public works. You have that, it's in place, we provided updates to it so that it meets the, the correct requirements. And you have to have a standards for ADA facilities. Actually, that is really simple because the city of Yelm has adopted street standards. And included in that are the state requirements in what is called the lag manual, the local agency guidelines, I believe it's chapter forty two which applies to all city streets except just your, your side streets. Understate law, it, the only reason it's in the local agency guidelines, which are for federally projects, is there wasn't any place else to put it. But you're covered in that, the pro-wag is the ADA standards propagated by the access board, which is under the Department of Justice. High law, the Department of Justice is supposed to do all this stuff, they push it off on this board that is finally, I think, now legalized, it's kind of odd situation. And the standards are subject to change almost at any time, that's the biggest difficulty that I've seen over the last twenty years of trying to stay with this stuff. Where are we? We've gone through the city code, it's pretty much up to snuff, gave you a few recommendations for that, went through the website. Need to make any updates on those, updated the, the notice, updated the coordinator position description. Provided a online grievance form so that anybody can access it from the web. I just learned in this last week with the session with the access board that you are now also expected to have an ADA compliant website. And I suggest that you take a look at how to make that happen, again, it's not terribly complicated, but it is a pain, a real pain. The plan is started as, as Pat said. Got all of the basics pretty well put together and the preliminary elements are drafted and what that is, is the, how you prioritize your projects. And we're trying to keep it fairly simple and we'll work with the data that the city already has, fortunately the city has pretty good data on ramps and the push button. And, and we have a news release drafted and ready to go. So, where do we go, get the news release published. Continue through the public engagement, give the public the chance to look at what we've provided and the basic priority stuff, we haven't finalized the priority system because it doesn't make sense to until we get any feedback that may come about. Honestly, I rarely see any feedback, I'm hoping that we'll get some, it's always helpful to know what the community is thinking and particularly those that are in need of these facilities. The final elements of the plan are drafted other than the priority system. And then we need to do the public engagement and, and review of that after that final draft plan is done. And then finalize and adopt the plan, that's kind of where we're at. Schedule. If we get the usual, really good, we fit tonight, the warm praise. If we get the news release out quickly, we should be able to respond to any public comments first part of next month. Within a week probably, I've given myself a little bit of time because I never know what's gonna come up to finalize the draft prioritization and the plan elements, then by the middle of June. Once again, take that out to the public with a, with a public announcement and then finalize the plan probably by the end of July, we've got plenty of time in the, in the contract. I'm not the parade, I'm really at your disposal. Typical of every city that I work with. Staff is just a little bit busy, so getting back to these and getting the comments done, it's sometimes a challenge for them and I fully understand that. And then hopefully at the August council meeting, we can adopt a plan. That's about it, keep it short sweet.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I just want to say I really appreciate your logo. It reminds you of Thundercats, yeah, was that, was that something you're going after?
Do you watch Thundercats?
No.
That's the lion.
No, it's Simba.
You know about.
I don't know. I know it's not Simba, but I know it.
Are you able to assist with the ADA website, could visibility of our website that way?
I can, but trust me, it's not worth the while having to do that, I have, I have to do some catch up on it and some further study on it. You'd be way better off to get somebody that's actually current website.
That's what. James.
I have to ask.
Yeah.
How, how does someone make a website ADA accessible? The biggest element of it is any graphics that are on there, you have to be able to describe those graphics in a particular set of ways. And without trying to get into all the details, that's essentially what it is, everything else you're pretty good with. The colors is the other issue, you have to have enough contrast that somebody with low vision that they're looking at or on the screen can, can read it. But.
That's fair.
Yeah, the, the description of the graphics is significantly more complicated than it sounds. Because there are some graphics that are non-essential, they're just there to make the website look nice, you know, your city logo is a perfect example. Not critical to what the information is there, it just says, you know.
How do you describe it though?
Exactly.
Take, there lies the challenge.
Right near.
Any other?
So we were already preset up to do this and these are new regulations that just came in.
No, these regulations can actually go back decades. Spins have not pressed it, but let me give you just one example. Now, the city of Chicago is just a bit bigger than the city of Yelm, their budget's a bit larger, but about ten, fifteen years ago, they had a claim against them and the Department of Justice went after them. The cost to the city of Chicago was fifty million dollars.
Quite a exact.
So if you got nailed the same way, you'd be looking at mid-finst. I'm pretty sure that would be a pretty big chunk of your budget.
Good fortune of that.
So, the, the whole idea is to stay ahead of that game. Probably what triggered this more than anything else is the, is the Federal Highway Administration just more recently started pressing the state on federally projects to make sure that agencies had a plan in place and that was correct. And, and you're required to update it every five years, typically that's really simple, it's better to keep track of your.
So we had updated in the past, but just never done it, never installed what was. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, did, did you want to say anything, Patrick? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, the L lodging.
I missed it. The logo.
It was all the.
Pretty close.
What is it for?
We're just. You remember this, you might.
No. I'm too, I'm too young. Oh. You mean what, because it was that far away, like in the past, that far?
Alright. Presentation on the lodging.
LTAC, yeah, let's smash gears. Something like that. It's independent.
Okay, so similar to the beautification, I'm just gonna throw in some information that is probably repetitive information for you guys. So because we have a population of over five thousand, we are required to and we impose lodging tax, we are required to have a lodging tax advisory committee to review the applications and make the funding recommendations. Um to review the applications and make the funding recommendations. So the lodging tax is charged on housing and lodging for periods of time less than thirty days. So we have one place in town that likes lodging tax, it's collect as a sales tax when people stay overnight. Um and the revenue has to be used for eligible tourism promotion grant. So by RCW, this is some of the items that can be used, that the funds can be used for. So RCW also dictates the membership on the committee. So two members, this is a minimum representative of a business required to collect the tax. Two members uh minimum involved in activities operates to be funded by the revenue, it's received from the tax. And one member is an elected official from the municipality who serves as the chair. Uh it can include one non-voting member who's an elected official of the county if we chose to do that. Currently, we have the five members. On all of our working missions. So the duties are the the LTAC, they receive the applications and then they review them, make sure they meet the RCWs for the allowed uses. And recommend a list to the city council for final determination. And the statute does say that the that when this comes before you at the next meeting, you can choose only from the recipients on the list of candidates recommended. Um and the recommended amounts that the lodging tax. So. If you deny, you would deny the whole package and it would have to go back to them for further review.
So we're not able to adjust the amounts like we did before?
The amounts are, you can't, not for lodging tax, you it would have to go back to the committee.
I don't, I specifically remember us talking about. The the asked was for this amount, we can choose to do.
I will re-review that RCW, but I'm pretty sure that that does, but I'll double check the RCW and make sure.
Yeah, sounded a whole lot like what the. That county board that we got arguing with last one, last one.
I kinda remember that too because one of the festivals, we didn't give the full amounts, yeah.
So yeah, maybe. For the next meeting.
So have to either accept it or send it back. And so I think we did last year.
We not be able to just make adjustments?
We have to agree with the LTAC has to have the recommendation.
They're the governing committee.
Yeah, yeah, cause they have people that puts into it, but recipients from it as well. That's just how the RCW reads.
If I remember right, last year we had the lodging tax, we did not, we only had one application initially and this is only for memory. Um and so it came before you. It was rejected and it went back for further, so we could have more advertising. And then it came back at a later date with this with some more applications. So I think it came back before you twice. The first time you did reject it.
The reason wasn't for the amount, it was the a fair chance of other people applying.
More advertisement.
And giving all the money to one person.
Yeah.
Who is the elected person?
The entire point of being either a city council or state representative or whatever. So. I mean, obviously, we can't do anything about it, our RCW needs to get fixed.
So for twenty twenty-three, the funding amount that was uh voted on by the lodging tax advisory committee in December was up to forty thousand dollars. So the advertising started to the public on January ninth on the city website. A press release was also emailed to Miss Valley Valley News in January. And then it was shared multiple times on the city's social media accounts. And then the application process closed on March first. The committee met, uh reviewed the applications. And they're making the following recommendations for twenty twenty-three for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars um for the four events. And those are the those jazz in the park two thousand. Valley Valley barbecue rally fifteen thousand. Agents of Discovery is a new program, it's a digital education platform. I don't have all the details, but it will go in the park. Um there's a group of. In the Puget Sound area of other places that have these and it's kind of like. Maybe correct me if I'm wrong, like the Pokemon Go where people will look, have an app. And I always say that word, you know, you go to different locations, so there might be a location in another city up north further. Um they're gonna see, find out where the other ones are and then they can come to Yell.
So that's a one-time event.
No, it's something that will be in the park ongoing.
Oh, ongoing?
Ongoing, yes. It's a one-time.
Is that like the, there's QR codes, you scan it, it gives you information?
It's a, it's an app that you download, um and then you will, you will check your app um. When you get to a park and you would see like, okay, there are four missions here in this park and it'll. It really very much like Pokemon Go where you move your phone and it'll pop up like educational facts and you have to like catch the salmon and it'll tell you. Things about salmon or. Like Kathy said, there's a a conglomerate of um people who use this app in the Puget Sound area that kind of creates a little. Uh team where it's using it to send people to all of the different places.
So there's nothing physical in the park, so.
I'm curious about the agents of discovery, the other ones that are listed. Uh we know they're from Yell. Does this agents of?
By the city of Yell. So this is something that we're gonna do as a city. Um to have this program in our heart.
Cause it's hard to people, is it gonna be a station or they, how do you know it's in the park?
So when you, when you. I'll teach her how to play Pokemon.
Is that the one where you jump off a cliff, cause it tells you to do that? It was like, you know, that game? And how come the barbecue rally is so heavily financed or the request is so much?
Compared to the. Um there's some discussion on the amounts, um but as voted, that's what the committee decided was the.
And were these amounts what was asked for on all of them?
Well, that's a good question.
No, agents of discovery was, I don't have the.
The rest of them are agents of discovery, I believe, was double that. Um it was more. And the committee wanted to see how the first year gets some information on it before they. Um were wanting to award more.
The agents of discovery is a yearly fee?
Yes.
But it's not on, it has to be voted on or the L, this isn't. Does it renew?
I don't see that. I mean, it seems cool. But I don't see how that's gonna even bring seventy-five hundred dollars worth of business, let alone revenue.
We can discuss.
The the setup fee is seventy-five hundred. The yearly fee is much more, much less, like it dropped. Yeah, it's almost half of what that is once it's set up. They set up to give you a character.
Well, I under, I understand it's.
And the lodging tax funds are set up, I mean, it's not like each event is not awarded based on you're gonna bring in the amount of money that. That is awarded to you. Um the idea is that you bring people to town, um they frequent the businesses, they tell their friends, you know, they're gonna come back. Um to Yell when they get a great meal at the restaurant or maybe they stay at the motel. I mean, so the idea is just to bring them here so they can see our city.
I understand that.
Money while they're here.
From what's up, I I don't really think about the music festival, but it's. We all know exactly why there would be so much of a higher amount for the barbecue rally. Because barbecue rally brings ten to twenty thousand people here, where the jazz in the park brings maybe a couple. That's why there's such a difference in the amounts of.
That's not why, no. The individual organization, that's what they asked for. They could have jazz in the park and asked for twenty thousand as well. They they didn't.
Saying they asked for two thousand.
Correct.
And but the total, we could have spent forty, did I hear that right?
Yeah. Twenty-four.
Just a question or reference to because um and I, three of the events are ones that are kind of annual. Do, are we gonna, when the packet comes before, so we're gonna see how that. From last year, what they would have brought in, uh you know, some way of showing how.
The proof.
The effectiveness of the events.
I can include the summary, cause each year they submit a report at the end of their um events. And I summarize those into a spreadsheet, so I can include that in the packet if you guys would like to see.
I would, I would appreciate.
Why don't we, Kathy, I'll include all of them, even if they didn't um apply this year, so we can have that transparency.
All of what?
All that, um cause there was a couple of, or did they all get? No, there was another, wasn't there, that was funded last year, that's not on this list.
The twenty twenty-two funds, the ones that were, all of the events that were awarded lodging tax funds in twenty twenty-two, just their summary of their events.
Can you recall which one that was? I'm sorry, that you saw last year.
The one cost is a one-time fee to set it up, and it was like programming and setting up the app, getting the uh.
Yeah.
It is. Geo fence put together and everything else like that. And then there's an annual fee that has to be paid. Okay, thank you.
That one's supposed to be a competition.
The what?
The annual music festival is a competition, for youth competition.
But the the twenty-five hundred though, the ongoing would have to go back before LTAC. Each year.
It could be.
If, I mean, if it, right.
Sure.
It's just not a, these are automatic renewals.
None of them.
Yes, right, exactly. I just wanted to make that clear.
And does somebody request this game or is this just our new idea? Just a new idea by Lynn? Oh, she's got great ideas.
Are we also approving the uh approving the annual fee?
No, no, no. That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a good question. Where does it come from?
Yeah. This is from the hotels, um mainly early hotel, they're the ones at the end of this. This isn't uh like the city of Yale paying into this this fund.
But they said the seventy-five hundred, it's seventy-five hundred to set it up, correct?
Oh, are you talking about?
No, the discovery thing. Yeah.
Oh, the actual get, I I don't know.
So the people that stay in the.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Right.
But usually these are outside of this, outside of Yell, so these aren't necessarily Yell taxpayers. In a sense, they are, cause they're theater when they come to town, but they aren't residents typically, they're seeing a hotel here most time.
Okay, but the city is hosting it, I mean, so the city's putting it on, the city is, the city is the. Am I just, I wanna make sure I understand. The city is requesting this.
Correct.
The city of Yell, the total cost is seventy-five hundred to set it up?
Well, that was the the more of the Cadillac plan. There's different levels tiers.
Okay, so we're, so the L, so you get twenty-five hundred from LTAC, where does the other five thousand come from, I guess? It it does, okay, okay.
So is this the lowest tier?
Okay, so it's, it doesn't cost seventy-five hundred, it's only costing twenty-five hundred. I'm just trying to.
But then we have. Let's let Lynn explain it.
The city's looking to reimburse some of the money out of the LTAC money.
I understand.
The rest of it, we're gonna get something where there, it's gonna go out of general.
What fund it was.
Listen to Lynn explain it, so she knows.
So there are some options. So we could come in for the twenty-five hundred and come in at the bottom tier plan. We could also pull some from the parks and rec budgets and go next year, next year. Or request money elsewhere and go next year, next year, or try it out for the remainder of twenty twenty-three. At that bottom level, see if people enjoy it and then look at it for twenty.
Brings people back in here.
So the annual fee would come out of the parks and rec budget, is that what I'm hearing? Cause someone mentioned annual fee.
There was an, yes, if we wanted to do it again next year, we would have to pay for it next year. At what level of cost?
For budget for the parks.
Yeah.
The park.
And then is there a virtual way to know how many people played the game?
Yes, with that top tier, the information that we get is just case. It gives data information where they're coming from.
It's all computerized.
How many staying in our parks? Um all of them. Now, the information that we get lowers with those lower tiers. So at this low lowest year, we might get. How many people play, but not from where, for how long, um. That kind of information, that would be super beneficial in coming back to LTAC and saying. This is how many people are playing from outside of our area.
But it doesn't really matter because they're not, never gonna come here, they never have to, right?
Oh, no.
In a virtual game?
No, they have to.
They have to physically come here to play a game?
Part of the setup is doing a. Is a geo fence.
Oh, oh, god.
Phone says, hey, you are located in. Activate.
So twenty-five is the entry level of the game.
Right, so if you have the app and you travel to Victoria, DC.
Okay.
It's gonna. Give you a notification, say, hey, you have the Agents of Discovery app, there are twenty-seven missions here, do you wanna play?
Oh.
Whereas someone else coming here would say, hey, welcome to Yell. You're, you have the Agents of Discovery app, there are seven missions.
So what do they discover? Like real things?
No.
It's not like, oh, there's the mountain, go over there.
Is it just gonna be Yell City Park or is it all of our parks included, like Hocken Park? And the only reason I'm asking is because I'm just trying to figure out how far, what are all the involvements gonna be?
Uh there is a limit to the number of missions you can have total at the different levels. And then how many you can have going at the same time at the different levels.
Okay.
So at a lower level, we might be able to do one mission at one park at one time. Whereas if you go up a little bit, we might be able to have, you know, three or four missions going at the three parks all the time.
And so that what you're with the LTAC uh right now, as we're at the, my understanding is we're going for the lowest one. Uh as a testing, find out, is this something that you might wanna expand? Does it, is it something that brings in tourism or not? And if it does, then we could, we can go and expand our package later on that way.
That was the recommendation from the.
Okay.
Committee.
So, and again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to really understand. The city is going to go, is that what you're saying? The city's gonna go in at the lowest level? So you're not gonna get the data, you're just gonna get the numbers, or is the city going to say? If that all gets approved, twenty-five hundred dollars, but we're gonna take five thousand out of the ten thousand dollar parking rec budget. I I'm I'm asking, I don't know.
Um, possible.
Okay, is that something that we vote on or not? I don't remember.
You have already voted on the.
Right, okay, that was my question.
How we use it.
But how, but, right, that's, that was my question, we don't, right, okay, and that's fair, I'm just asking. Cause I think that's gonna be a topic. Okay. So you don't know yet where, what you're doing. I I, that sounded bad. No, 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 but I mean, you don't know if you're going in at the twenty-five hundred or if you're gonna go at the top tier yet. That decision has not been made by the city yet.
Correct.
Thank you, okay. Okay.
Uh question I have is in reference to uh one of the earlier slides you gave, you talked about who pays into the LTAC. I know that we have the hotels, the one, you know, um my question is. Do the bed and breakfast and Airbnb, do they pay into the LTAC or not? Because of the definition you had, there's less than thirty days, and so I'm just wondering, do they pay into the system as well?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
You would think they would.
I know we asked this question before and I.
The bed and breakfast, yeah.
Okay, Airbnbs are not going to be the same as.
Well, no, no, but as I said, I I know we have at least one um bed and breakfast. And I'm trying to, I just, it's always, whenever we bring up the LTAC, every time I've heard it discussed is. It's one, one source, one source, one source, and I'm thinking, no, I thought we had more than one source according to the RCW. So, yeah.
That's a great question, thank you, we will get the information and give it to you at the meeting.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Were you done?
I am done, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, um mayor's report.
Um like to request a review of our study session made to the council chambers. As of what's on the topic, um one is a fireworks discussion. Um the other is a YMCA discussion. We'll be having Kyle Cronk from the Y here as well as Jim Nelson Hughes, our um. We'll be having Kyle Cronk from the Y here as well as Jim Nelson, he was our, um, our money guy. He works our investments and stuff like that, I think DA Davidson. And, um. Those could potentially have a lot of people in the audience and, uh.
What is the fireworks, what's the fireworks discussion?
Um, what council wants to do, we had a, um.
Yeah, how did that turn out anyway?
Yeah, we, we did a vote of the people advisory vote. Um, it came back where people did not wanna ban. It was. I, I think it was fifty-six or fifty-seven percent, so. So it wasn't a huge majority, but I thought it'd be something that council would be able to discuss. If they wanna.
The advisory thing was to ask the public if they wanted to vote on whether we should ban it or not.
No, it was, it was whether the city council was going to.
A advisory vote, meaning it's, they're asking the voters, should we do this?
And then we have the discussion.
And then one option we could do, one route that we could take is. Um, aligning ourselves more with the county and just do what the county does rather than what the state is. Um, make it more, you know, more, that's just one option, it's council's decision. What's that?
What's the cameras?
Um, they have reduced days than what we have. I think it's four or five days, around like four days.
And we're open, right? We're just open, we don't have any restrictions. On how many days you can do fireworks.
Correct, we are. With RCW, we, I don't believe we, um, specify it's any less than that. We have the authority to as city council, the city to do so, but again. That's a decision for the city council to discuss and, um, figure out, but this is at a study session. Um, if council, if we get, um, council saying that they want action or they want some put up. We can absolutely put that on the agenda, but at this point, it's just discussion. Um, so the biggest thing I wanted to ask if that was all right.
The YMCA guy's gonna have all the numbers and all the information.
Um, Jim Nelson is, Kyle Cronk's gonna talk more about the, um, logistics and what is, I don't think council's met with him yet. And as well, a couple have, but, um. Not as a whole, so this will be an opportunity for the whole council to go ahead. You know, ask questions about whatever. Yeah. We will be sure to tell you. No, but all the other stuff that comes with the Y is going for, uh. There we go, that's a discussion for this, uh, study session.
Okay, initiative. I got nothing, Terry?
I'm just excited to see the lights, the benches, the wayfinding signs, the street sweeper.
I've seen the street sweeper.
Are you seeing the lights?
Over there. They're water, right, they're really. So we're gonna lose our lantern style.
No, the, the new ones are, they look just like that. The two different ones are in the city park, they're that same thing, but they're shorter and they have the decorative top.
So when is all that gonna happen?
They're working on it right now.
What about the tree lights?
And I noticed that Salon Nouveau removed their. Um, awnings. I don't know if they're putting any new ones back, but it looks better without all the stuff, all the moss and that stuff on top of it, so. But no, I have no initiatives.
Oh, yeah, um, I did wanna share a little thing, um. The local churches are coming together for a National Day of Prayer, and that's gonna be on. Uh, May fourth, which is actually like Star Wars Day. And what, what's cool about that is, um, they really wanna come alongside and pray over Yell. And at, at that too, they wanted to approach, um, I think council and maybe even, um, the city and just say, hey, what, what can we pray for over our community? And, and, and I know sometimes everybody's like, wow, you know, there's a lot of things people want to talk about. But, um, especially with the way things are, especially with, um, government. Um, we, we wanna as churches, we wanna come alongside. Government and say, hey, we wanna just come alongside you and pray with you. And say, hey, what do you need us to pray for, what are some needs that are in the city? You made a joke by saying, hey, man, tell me pray for the bypass, we will. Pray that things get moved, but, uh, again, and so it's basically. A kind of, kind of shared needs community and say, hey, we wanna know what those needs are, we wanna put them to thought and we wanna keep them on our thoughts and prayers and, uh. But that's coming up and I, I think I, I gave him Kathy's information because they wanna get on the agenda. I'm not sure, did they already schedule that, an event thing at the park yet, is that thing, so they did get, okay. So, um, I just wanna put that, make you guys aware of that, cause, uh. I think again, it's part of, uh. You know, being community and listening to each other and finding out what we, what we need as a community, and, uh, there's just. It's just rough right now with, um. How do you say, reception of government? And so I think city government, it would be healthy for us to really unite and say, hey, we're with it. So, just putting that out there.
Denominations will be represented.
Lot of mixed denominations, wow, it's funny how that works out too, there's. What I know for sure, there's a. Catholic church, and they keep giving us the invitation to come back to Catholic church, which is great, I love Steve. He's like, you guys at the back of, oh, why don't you come to our church, but, uh, so, so there's, uh, I think for an offshoot Catholics. Um, we have the invitation out to everybody, really, it's not specific. But I know the churches that are really involved, and then I know there's Four Square, there's, uh, Assembly of God. There's, uh. Living Water, I, I, I mean, I can name the churches that I know show up to the things, we try to open up to everybody, but not everybody wants to meet together. And I'm just like, well, eventually at some point. Uh, so, you know, sometimes, again, the idea, and I mentioned this to Kathy earlier, is. I think there's this premise in the past where churches became very inward and they didn't really. Get out to the community and get involved. And so I think what our churches are trying to do is get back involved in the community and not just be a little inward thing and, and be part of community, so. Which I think is huge, because I think for a while there. We kind of forgot how to do that, so I'm excited for it and I'm excited, uh, as they said, you know, and we, we were very. Careful in how we present ourselves, so if you're gonna present ourselves and, and be public. Make sure you, you know, get involved and find out what the public needs, don't just go ahead and pray what you want. You know what I mean, so.
So is it an event or is it just we give our wishes for prayers and?
It is an actual event that we have scheduled at, uh, I think it's at Cockburn Park or something, but they want to find out from everyone. What is there, what are some needs we can pray for, and sometimes when you find out there's, there's needs you can pray for, sometimes you find people say, well. I can actually just show up and help you. So that's, so it's almost like. Kind of sharing each other's, you know, everybody knows, you know, unless you get involved with everybody, find out, what, what are some things we need to pray for in the community, you don't know until you know. Until you have the conversations with other, other.
No more emergencies on I five.
Yeah. But no, those, those are just thoughts out there, so if you guys have things you wanna, like, hey, man, if you guys are gonna pray, tell them to pray for this.
It's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
Ashley? Yeah, I have one initiative and that is the Red Cross event at the end of this month. Uh, we need twenty-four volunteers for the day of lunch or snack one. Will be. Provided a shirt, you know, you're gonna get some swag from Red Cross. Um, and the city of Yell is a partner along with Public Works, and so it'll be at the Public Works. Um, building nine AM to two PM and we're going from Crystal Springs to Road and Road. And then some backup, we're looking at backup maintenance that might. Need it if we don't get, if we have a met passive turnout of volunteers that wanna get to work. So we can like spread that around. Um, but I've been planning in a planning meeting every week for the last two months, making sure this gets done. Uh, so organizations such as the churches are welcome to be a part of it, and so what happens if you're curious? There are, uh, three responsibilities in each home that accepts the work. To be done and, uh, one will be doing install, one will be information, and then the other one will help them execute a. Emergency evacuation plan, and then just move from each home. And it's just like boom like that.
I thought you were drawing blood.
No, Red. Go ahead, so Red. So Red Cross is, it's called Sound the Alarm, so it's focused on smoke detectors. And it's very important that we do preventative. When you think Red Cross, you think of the aftermath, right, they're there when someone, when there's a. When there's a call, I've learned so much, when there's a call and there's a fatality. They go there every time someone gets sent out, when, if there's one to five fatalities, they're there. Red Cross is, so you see them a lot in the aftermath, in the action afterwards. But this is their program for preventative measures, and it's the first time that it's coming to the city of Yell, so. And then the next are going to like Port Angeles and different parts, it's all over Washington.
Something you'd like to share with the group?
Passing notes in the back to class.
Yeah, so it'd be great to see, uh, more of the councils. City councillors involved in that, if you could, I'm, what, nine to two, it's really short. And you get a T-shirt, and for T-shirts. No, no, okay.
Or initiatives, uh, one is, uh, I was, I was at the, uh, Young. Senior Center, I'm for their meeting last month, reminding them that, you know, being an advocate to help them out, they are, uh. They're very much. Looking forward to trying to figure out what they wanna do, so haven't gotten any requests from them yet. The other initiative is, uh, from one of the meetings last, uh, last month, uh. Need to try to figure out, and I've talked to public service, public safety, and it's something I think we need to kind of look at. It's getting roads marked as whether it can be for commercial traffic or not. Uh, the issue is that when I five all of a sudden shuts down and we have all the commercial traffic coming through Yell. Some of them are choosing not to go all the way from, um, five to seven to five, ten, they're starting to go through neighborhoods. And we need to really take a look at what streets can handle it, where they are allowed to go and not go so that. We can make sure we are not inconveniencing our residents. Those are it so far. Oh, one more thing, you mentioned the senior center, this Saturday is their breakfast. Thank you, Bob.
All right, anything else?
Cause they have new people, they do. So maybe there'll be a new one.
Terry has one more thing.
I almost hate to bring this up, but somebody on the chamber board asked me if we were gonna have, um, a table at the Home and Garden Show. For, for the citizens to come and ask us questions. I know, I'm not volunteering. We didn't hear anything about that, did we Lynn? Just skip it.
Have they had representation prior years?
At, at, at the home show, really?
And then what did the city do at that table?
Okay.
Like, maybe Cody could go because he knows everything going on in the infrastructure.
More about the, not necessarily the council sitting there. Having questions, but more maybe about the events and. Or what the city does, no?
Well, not events.
No, I understand, okay.
Cody. It's at the end of April, twenty ninth of April.
But you haven't received anything.
They might reach out to you, I don't know, I think it was Jane that told me. Yeah, they're look, they're looking for people for booths. So just tell them no.
All right, anything else? Going, going, gone. No, I, I already said I didn't, I apologize.
You said going, going, gone, done.